All right, North Smithfield Town Council meeting, April 21st, 2025. Madam Clerk, can you sign us with a prayer and a pledge, please?
Thank you for bringing us together today in a spirit of generosity. May we honor one another by keeping an open mind. May we voice our truth and listen with an open heart. May we discern your will to unite in a fruitful outcome. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for.
Roll call? Thank you.
Mr. Christopheraro?
Here.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Punchak?
Here.
Ms. Alves?
Here.
Does anyone wish to sign up for open forum? Open forum, pursuant to 42-46-6D, maximum three minutes per person. Mr. Grubb?
Hi, I'm Richard Grubb, Bond Street. I just had a couple of quick notes. One, I was hoping we could keep the quarry on the agenda since the decision on the overlay has been delayed and possibly could get delayed again. There are still things to talk about, and I think project updates would be a good thing for the citizens of our town. For instance, I had asked a question before whether it was even the legal right to combine the 89 acres into one. I never heard back. I assume since we proceeded to try to hire experts for peer review that we must have discounted that question or forgotten about it. There are other questions, such as the quarry has come up with this zoning overlay proposal. And when I went back, and I'm certainly not a legal person, but when I went back and read the judge's summary judgment in December of 2023, he didn't seem to leave that as an option. He suggested to the quarry that you go back and work it out with North Smithfield zoning. And they've come up with a plan to go around zoning, but even is that even what was directed by the judge? At the very least, please find out for yourselves. I was surprised at the April meeting of the planning board when Mr. Carrillo mentioned that one of the resumes that was passed in in response to our looking for experts had included a review of our comprehensive plan. And then later on in the meeting, Mr. Carrillo suggested to Jeff Porter that we couldn't have a combined meeting for a few reasons, including a possible conflict of interest. But he also said this person to review the comprehensive plan should come to the planning board and not to town council. I went back again, and I reviewed when you made the motion, Dave Punchak, that we go ahead and seek outside independent guidance. I could find no words indicating that we were seeking guidance on the comprehensive plan. I could only find that we were seeking guidance on what the quarry was presenting as expert testimony. And I don't even recall the words "peer review" at that meeting, but they may have been given. But that's the explanation that Mr. Carrillo gave the planning board, that they were out seeking for peer review. Maybe that's what happened, but that's not what I remember. So I think it'd be a great idea if we could give updates, if not every meeting, maybe every other meeting, just like you do the asset committee and the progress we've made with the police station. All great stuff, but it helps to go back and review the questions and the answers and where we go from here. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Walling?
Scott Walling, we've rolled out. I believe it was the April 7th meeting, I had a couple of questions, and I'd like to have some information. The rant, one was the weight limit on Pine Hill Road, Paltry Road, Pine Hill Road, it's expired. I would like to know if we have an answer on it, why they're still operating without seeking council permission again. And the other one was, oh, the experts, how are we doing getting experts for blasting the water quality, dust control, what have you? I just wanted to know if you have any answers.
Mr. Administrator, do we have any update on having the individuals come to the next meeting for peer review on the material sand?
I haven't gotten an update from the planner yet, and I know that he was reaching out for getting resumes, but I don't know what their status is at the time. I will clarify tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, and I have one thing to add, too. We're all about saving money for the town here. Mr. Grubb pointed out, are they grandfathering that 89 acres? Because if they're not, they don't have to hire experts and save the town money. So I think that's agenda one, are they grandfathering? We need to find out for everybody. Save the town some money, save some aggravation, move on with life in North Smithfield other than material sand. That's what I'd like to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Igliozzi, can you just make some sort of statement about that, maybe at the next meeting, about people asking what actually grandfather is and what that means? Because can we have some sort of statement on that at the next meeting?
We can, but obviously that's a subject matter of the lawsuit that's unresolved. I can give you that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in open forum? North Smithfield Town Council sitting as Board of Licensing. A transfer of liquor license for Buffalo Wild Wings located at 51 Darling Boulevard. This item was tabled from 3/17. The request has recently been withdrawn. B mobile food establishment license, DBA Alley and Eli's Freshly Squeezed. Is there anyone from, did you want to come up to the podium, please? Hi, could you state your name and address, please?
Yes, Samantha Dorado, and it's 83 Parnell Street, options for aisle.
Do you want to give us a little information on the business and the license that you're seeking?
This is our second year in business. We are Freshly Squeezed for a lemonade trailer. We have over 14 flavors, kind of, over 14 flavors. We're as mix and match, and we've kind of started this because we wanted something more natural instead of like, you know, the normal, and I don't mean to bash anyone, but the normal, like, super snow cone, super sugar, sweet, artificial. So we wanted to go for more of the natural side, and we took it from there. And then we were invited down to North Smithfield, so we had to come and get our license, and so far, so good.
And where will you be operating?
Beef Barn, they're having a spring artisan fair.
So that's the only one you have on your record?
So far, yeah.
Okay. All right. Is everything in order, Madam Clerk? Anyone have any questions?
I just have a quick question, actually. So if she gets her license now for this, she's good for the year if something else comes up, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's what we love, too, because most towns, we have about the year, and then it kind of brings in openings for us as well, like, hey, guess what? We needed this, or we're having this in this town. And it's good for everyone, you know, like, of course, for us business-wise. But we love to be in small communities, like, we love, like, North Providence as well. I love that you guys do these meetings. They're awesome. Not all of them do it, but these are awesome.
Anyone have any other questions? Someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Alley and Ellie's Fresh Squeezed Lemonade.
Yep, Alley and Ellie's Freshly Squeezed.
Freshly squeezed. I'd like to approve the license request as presented.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopheraro?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara, sorry. Ms. Alves?
Yes. Congratulations, you're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion by Councilor, other action on Peddler/Hawker/Holiday Sales License, DBA Keystone Fireworks Tent, owner Keystone Novelties Distributors LLC, 900 Victory Highway. Hi.
Hi, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
My name's Ed McMahon. I live at 140 Longsdale Farm Road in Cumberland, Rhode Island. And we're here, like last year, to see if we can get the permit to set up the fireworks tent. There wasn't no problems last year with it.
And 900 Victory Highway is exactly, where is that? Which is that?
That's where it's going to be, yeah.
No, what?
Sladeville Plaza.
Sladeville Plaza?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Madam Clerk, is everything in order? Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the license for Keystone Fireworks Tents at 900 Victory Highway.
We have a motion, is there a second? Second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopheraro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes. Thank you, you're all set.
Thank you.
Discussion by Councilor, other action on payment of bills. Anyone have any questions on the packet?
Madam President?
Yes.
I have a question. Bring your attention to number one on the Renee Jakes for $175 for a videographer. Now, full disclosure, that's my niece, but that's not why I'm bringing this up, because other people have filled in as well, and I think that's a fair price, $175 for a night's work. But really, what's not fair, and I'll be bringing this up when we do the budget, is somebody that's filling in for the night is getting the same pay that Jason is over here, who does all the work every night and handles troubleshoots, and we call him all the time. And I don't think that Jason...
CJ.
CJ, I'm sorry. I called you CJ. I call you CJ all the time, too. I don't know if I'm calling you CJ. Anyway, I don't see that, I don't think it's right that CJ is getting the same pay as the fill-ins. So come budget time, I think he's due at least a $50 or $75 raise. It should be a two-tiered system. It should be, CJ would get the one amount, and people that are filling in would continue to get the $175. Because, I mean, just in the name of fairness. That's all.
Anyone else have any other questions?
I have a few questions.
Go ahead.
Item number 29, the crash and crime scene mapping technology. I know that we have a later agenda item to discuss what I believe that might be referring to.
Yep.
So was this technology already purchased?
No, it's not purchased yet. We haven't, they haven't been using the system at all yet.
Okay, so we're approving the payment of bills?
But we haven't sent them, we haven't sent them a check yet.
Okay.
Yeah, we still holding the check to approve the usage of said software.
Okay, okay. The legal professional services, I saw that there was a $9,000 deficit.
Yeah, that's just the usage for the litigation that we have going on, a few cases that we have, and the negotiations that we have.
Okay, so what are we going to do about the deficit?
You can't, unless council approves a, so when there's a deficit within the department and there's no funds to transfer from another account into that account to cover the deficit, you have to do an interdepartmental transfer, and to do so, you have to do a budget amendment, which at this point, at this late in the year,
Okay.
it's not really worth it.
Okay.
Unfortunately, you just let the department go over. But in other departments, we may do our best to try and cover those deficits.
Okay.
But in such a small, there's only two lines in that account.
Right, right, right. And there are some other deficits, but I kind of went for the bigger ticket items?
I can go through some, I have details about some of them.
The only other one that really caught my attention was obviously that $95,000 deficit for the water Phillips project.
Yeah. So the way that works is, so this is from litigation prior to me.
Okay.
It was, so what we did was we have to set up an account in the water fund to cover the expenses for this Phillips litigation that we had. Phillips, to my understanding, Phillips had given us around $240,000 to cover expenses for hookups. We had recognized that revenue in the prior fiscal year, that's on the balance sheet. You won't see it on the revenue and expenditures side. So we had mid-year, we had to set up an account to funnel the expenditures through. Come audit time, our auditor will end up doing an adjustment to move the revenue to cover those expenses into the P and L side of things. So it ended up getting, we have the revenue, we just have to find somewhere to put the expenditures.
Okay.
And at that time, during budget season, we didn't have the money yet. So it looks like a negative, but it's actually not.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone have any other questions? Anyone like to make a motion to approve the payment of bills?
I'll make a motion to approve the payment of bills for April 21st, 2025, in the amount of $4,871,608.36.
That's a motion, is there a second? Did you choose a second?
There's a second.
We have a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Sorry, just one more thing. Put it in red to make myself not forget. Due to the influx of Camp Phoenix coming around, it's a whirlwind of expenditures that come at the beginning of every season. Marie had just let me know that she might not be able to do a payment of bills of the first month, next, first meeting next month. So if you guys don't see it there, it's not. It's just because she's busy trying to do a bunch of other invoices for Camp Phoenix, so just FYI.
All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopheraro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes. Discussion by Councilor, other action on consent agenda. All items listed in this section are considered in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda. A Town Council minutes of March 17, 2025. Communications of Animal Control monthly report of March 2025. North Smithfield Fire and Rescue monthly report for March 2025. North Smithfield Municipal Court monthly report for March 2025. And North Smithfield Police Department monthly report for March 2025. Does anyone wish to take any of these items out of the consent agenda?
I'd like to remove the minutes, please.
Okay. Anyone have anything else that needs to be removed?
I was going to request the same thing, so.
Anyone make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus the Town Council minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus the Town Council minutes of March 17, 2025.
We have a motion, is there a second? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopheraro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes. And the minutes of March 17?
So on the last page, under the motion made by Mr. Punchak, let me just back up for one second. Well, the subject matter experts will be approved by Mr. Landry and his team prior to the engagement of the experts. Now, I thought Mr. Igliozzi made it very clear that they were not going to approve anybody. They were going to review, they were not going to approve. I think it's important to change that from...
I'm sorry, I'm not...
So on the last page, motion made by Mr. Punchak, it's probably like the third sentence. And I actually think, oh, no, Mr. Bureau God made the motion prior to mine. That's all I had.
Mine is more of an observation. If you look, go to the first page, and you're just down to the bottom third of the page. And Joanne, was, did I read something recently that there was going to be a program?
Yes.
That was gonna kind of do the minutes on its own?
Yes.
Because when you have over here, and I'm not knocking you, I understand you're very busy, but I don't know if this is typically the way it's done, but it just says, for instance, Town Council member, Mr. Bureau God spoke. Town Council member, Mrs. Harris spoke.
Correct.
Mr. Grubb spoke. Is that, that doesn't really, that kind of leads a lot to the imagination.
It does, but because we're live streaming and it technically, in the, well, not the ordinance, but in the laws for the minutes, it does say that you just have to put who spoke in motions. So we've been trying to make it more minimal because we've just been bogged down, but that's why I'm getting that program. We're going to try to start it for the next minutes, because it's just a lot.
What is it, AI?
Yeah. Yeah, we've tried a couple of them and...
They're coming.
Yeah. But it was wonderful. We just have, I have to find time to call them and...
Yeah.
We've had somebody out every week, so it's been tough trying to...
Okay.
But, yeah.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
So are you actually, you're having to actually amend the minutes, right? To go to...
I think the minute should be amended for that, yes.
Just to review, okay.
I'll listen to it again.
Okay.
All right, any other changes or comments on the minutes? Would you like to make a motion to approve the minutes of March 17 as amended?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of March 17 as amended.
It's a motion, is there a second? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Mr. Christopheraro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes. Yes. I'm just giving a little business, that's, because no one's here for, I mean, it's just us. New business discussion by council voter, other action on Department of Public Works, purchase of backhoe, Mr. Penegas.
Good evening, Ray Penegas, Director of Public Works. You should have in front of you the bid package for a pre-owned used backhoe. Finance Department opened up the four sealed bids, and the lowest bidder was Monroe Tractor, $97,588 for a 2023 Case 580N backhoe.
Is this a replacement?
It's a replacement to the 2004, I believe.
Are you trading that in and getting any value or no?
I think we're gonna auction, I think we can get a better deal on the auction. The numbers we got for trade-ins-
North Providence will probably buy it, right?
Somebody will.
And this is part of the Capital Reserve, Tony? Anyone have any other questions?
There's a nice backhoe for sale on Route 7. One of our neighbors looks like he's selling it, so I don't know if he'll go in lower than $97,000, right?
I'd just like to abide by the state law.
Any other questions? Anyone want to make a motion for the bids?
I'll make a motion to approve the request to purchase a 2023 Case 580N from Monroe Tractor in the amount of $97,588, with the funds coming from the Capital Reserve.
That's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau Guard?
Yes.
Mr. Cristofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Panchak?
Yes.
Ms. Alve.
Yes. Next one is discussion by council voter, other action on contract amendment number five of the 2022 townwide roadway improvements. Mr. Penegas?
You should also have a package for contract amendment number five. This is an amendment for power engineering to provide professional services for the review of design drainage improvements in the vicinity of 71 Wilkes Ave. The cost of the amendment is $26,480.
What's going on over there?
Flooding, and it's going into a private, private property. So, once it goes into the wetland area, we have to get DEM involved, so.
What is it as a result of, just?
I think it's just drainage coming off the roadway.
PAR indicates that it was because the town paved the road in 2018?
In 2018, we paved over there. So the drainage in some places is questionable at best.
So is that part of the paving program? No, it was just-
Back in 2018 it was.
So at the time, wouldn't they have given you plans to say, you know, you need to do these three things to, for drainage, you know?
I'd have to go back and check the plans that PAR did back then. Normally if they recommend any drainage improvements, it's done before we pave.
I'd be curious to see if there was anything recommended at the time, just because if, you know, it was recommended and done and failed, I think it's a different conversation.
And I think all of that will come out with the review that they're doing now, because we have to go before DEM for this now. Encroaching on private property.
Encroaching on private, so there wasn't, there was, the wetland is new?
Yes, we've never had this issue down there.
So we created a wetland there?
I'm not gonna say that. I would really like to rely on the engineers to make that comment.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So did PAR complete the review last time for this roadwork in 2018?
PAR did the engineering work back in 2018 for all the roads, yes.
Okay, and they didn't anticipate that something like this could happen? And now they're providing a review for the drainage?
They're only providing the review because we've asked them to do it because of the resident at 71 Wilkes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone have any other questions? Anyone want to make a motion regarding the PAR contract amendment?
One clarifying question, is it, was this budgeted for?
It falls under the roadway improvement plan, so. It wasn't.
This specific project wasn't budgeted for, but we have budget to-
We come across all sorts of issues in the whole town. And it doesn't, there's nothing planned for the most part until there is an issue. This wasn't planned, so now it's an issue.
Okay.
Do you have any negotiating room?
We'll be prob, well, we might. The problem is that this is outside our jurisdiction. It's, if this all falls under any permitting, any work that has to be done has to be permitted by DEM. This could take up to a year to get permitted.
I get it, you know, I'm just, the pre-engineering survey for $7,300, if work was done out there seven years ago, seems to me there's gotta be some survey information available, so.
I'll definitely have PAR review-
Drop the hammer.
Yeah, absolutely. Nothing to hurt by them reviewing what they already did in 2018 and were paid for.
I think we can help the residents, right, they're leaking, you need, you gotta fix it, right? We're gonna help the residents, and then we can go back and we can chase the money later.
Correct. The big, the big issue right now is the resident at 71 Wilkes has a problem.
Exactly.
That's, so if we have to wait another year for the process, six months or a year, that's gonna just make this gentleman have a headache.
You have a headache.
I have a headache every day, but it'll certainly make us go back and review the plans back in 2018, because PAR certainly did it, so. It's a good point.
Madam President? I'll make a motion to approve the $26,480 for PAR, for a contract amendment for PAR engineering to fix the improvements of the vicinity of 71 Wilkes Ave.
I'll second.
That's a motion, a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau Guard?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Cristofaro?
Yes.
Mr. Panchak?
Yes.
Ms. Alve.
Yes.
And if we could just have somebody make a motion for the administrator to sign the contract?
John, you wanna add that to your?
Yeah, I'd also like to add to that motion to authorize the administrator to sign the contract.
Do we need to roll call on that? All right, everyone in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion by, discussion by council voter, other action on purchase of a crash scene mapping system from LaserTech for the North Smithfield Police Department. Are you presenting this, or?
Yeah.
Do you want me to skip it for now?
No, I can, it's fine, I mean, if there's super deep questions, I can't fully answer it, but, I mean, Landry's kinda given me the, and it says it in his memo of what it's used for, the mapping of the crash scenes involved with victims with serious bodily injury and fatalities. And we're gonna end up having to do a, at some point later on, I'm gonna end up doing a bunch of budget transfers near the end of the year to cover this from education and training into software and licenses. They were looking at this early, early last year, and it is, they are sharing off the North Carolina Sheriff's Association procurement program. And I had reached out to the Providence purchasing agent. I wasn't really sure if using someone that far away was, would suffice, and he said, just as long as they're honoring the same dollar amount as they would in North Carolina, it should be fine, so.
Was this budgeted for?
No, it wasn't specifically budgeted for, but they have a dollar amount in there, which is why I'm also doing a transfer from education and training. But there's usually a small portion of funds in education and training and software and licenses that are for many other softwares that they wanna partake in, something that comes up, something from a prior year.
And of all the potential education, training, software opportunities, they feel as though this crash and crime scene mapping technology is the best option for our town right now.
That's what I had asked Landry, and he said that a lot of the other municipalities use this one. There's not very, very many out there, which is why he had to reach all the way out to North to use their procurement program. But according to him, it is, it is sound, and other municipalities use it. So I defer to his experience, expertise in this.
Yeah, I mean, I, before I vote on this, I would appreciate Mr. Landry or Chief LaFerty to provide their perspective on why this is necessary for our police department.
Yeah, that's totally fine.
I know that it's only $11,000, but I just feel like there might be other opportunities for other, you know, we're saying it's education, training, other resources.
No, I'm taking the funds from education, their account to cover this in software licenses, yeah, that's all.
But could those funds be used elsewhere? If they feel as though this is the most appropriate means right now to use that funding for, then fine, but I would like for them to come and represent it.
Yeah, sure. Can have that happen.
You know, I gotta say, I agree with Rebecca on this, because it would've been kinda cool to see a demonstration, maybe a video of what the mapping system does and how it works and all that stuff. I, it'd been kinda, kinda nice to see that, you know, instead of just seeing something on paper, but.
Yeah, I'll reach out to, to Landry and see if he can, him or the chief will come and provide some insight.
It'll also be good to know what are the ongoing, like recurring costs? Is that like a yearly fee associated with software upgrades that doesn't indicate any of that here, so.
I had asked him that, and he said it was, he said it was very cheap. I wanna say like under $100, if I remember correctly, but either way, I'll have them add more detail for the next meeting.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that, thank you.
And then Tony, I'm just kinda looking at it in another way, like we're, we're already going into May, we only have like a couple months left to our fiscal period, and we're coming up with $11,000 that we're not spending, so I'm kinda looking at it like, are we just trying to find ways to spend this money?
Right, right.
If we had to reach out to North Carolina to find out who's using it, so obviously there's no one in this area using it, so I'm just wondering, does this size town really need to use it?
I had asked him, well, I told him, because of the dollar amount, we would have to go out to bid, and I said, unless they are on some type of purchasing procurement, and then he had told, he reached out to them. They said the NCPP, which I was speculative about, and then I reached out to the guy who runs the purchasing group for Rhode Island in Providence, and I wanted his opinion. And he had told me, you know, a lot of other municipalities do that. You know, they, they use from all over the United States, just as long as the pricing is honored from that area here, but yeah. I agree.
Yeah, and I, I mean, if, and does anyone around this area actually have it or use it?
Yeah, he can, yeah, I'll have him, yeah, I'll have him provide a couple of those details too.
But I just think it's kinda concerning we can come up with that kind of money this late in the, in the fiscal season, you know? So we're gonna table-
Tax return.
Huh?
Tax return.
We're gonna table this till next meeting? All right, thank you.
Yeah, or the meeting after, I think you guys have-
The next meeting we have at school, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you can't go on-
Maybe the meeting after.
If you can't go on that one, then we can just put it to the next one.
Yeah.
All right, discussion by council voter, other action on asset management commission. Presentation by Asset Management Commission.
Is this an okay place to stand for you guys to be able to see?
Yep.
Okay. Before I start, kinda some housekeeping. You should have had in your package the handout from the PowerPoint where you can make, you know, questions or comments. And just the narrative portion of the report that we've been working on for the past year or so. There's an awful lot of attachments in the report. It's like this thick, so. What we'll do is after the presentation, see if we can get that on the asset management website. I've, in my previous life, I've given quite a few presentations where you only have 20 minutes to give a presentation, and I find when I talk about asset management, it's kinda so complex that it's hard for people to hold questions till the end. So I have no problem if anything, you wanna pop a question at any point, that's fine. So from the Asset Management Committee, my name is Paul Nordstrom. I'm a retired professional engineer. We have Lou McElrune, fresh off the Little League fields. He's the chair. He's the vice chair. He's a project manager at Rhode Island Department of Transportation, and they do have an asset management program, so he's been a lot of help. And Rourke Maynard, who's actually been with the Asset Management Commission from the very beginning. He's an analytics manager at Blue Cross Blue Shield in their finance department. And he's a person I rely to to draw the Excel spreadsheets or something like that. So, all, all this is, is kind of a summary of the report. You don't have to take any action or anything, I'm sure there'll be subsequent meetings. We wanted to have the opportunity to explain asset management and some of the things we're thinking for the town. So, what is asset management? Okay, and I'm not gonna read off the slides. I hope, I hope you appreciate that, it's a lot of information. Basically what you're trying to do with asset management, obviously you're trying to keep the assets maintained, but more importantly, during the course of the annual budget, you're trying to prevent these type of things, oscillations happening on your capital expenditures. Try to even things out, and I've seen it work. It's a painful process to go through, but I've seen it work. This, next one. There's several aspects of an asset management program. You have to develop a list and a breakdown of all the assets. You conduct a condition assessment to see what state it's in. You do a criticality risk assessment to determine what the priority is gonna be. You rely, you're coming up with a plan that best suits the needs of North Smithfield. There's no one size fits all. I mean, it's a very specific type of program where the town in North Smithfield would decide how deep they wanna go into asset management. And really an important part of it is, I put computerized maintenance management system. Since I retired, there's a lot of companies that now have come out with actually asset management software. Part of the problems we face in North Smithfield is the old computerized maintenance management system operated off a mainframe, which, you know, the town doesn't really have. The new technology uses the cloud, so there are a lot of systems out there where all the assets can be tracked. It will help print out CIPs and really help in terms of financing, maintaining of the assets. We've included four examples. The town has done some of this in certain aspects, okay? The one I'm most familiar with is Narragansett Bay Commission. For about 30 years, I was the director of operation and engineering at the Bay Commission, and naturally a bulk of the assets were in my division. So I had the dubious honor of managing the development and the implementation of the asset management program that we did probably more than 15 years ago. I've seen it work. The Narragansett Bay Commission is a regulated utility, so they're subject to the Public Utility Commission. And when we came up with the asset management program, they allowed it, they set up a restricted account. So on a yearly basis, you really can't overspend, but if you underspend, it gets carried over, but that money can't be used to balance any shortfalls in the budget. So it's strictly to maintain assets and replace assets. As you can see by some of the statistics, it's just so much bigger than a town in North Smithfield, North Smithfield budget-wise, but also equipment-wise. Just in my division, we had 40 buildings, and that was six years ago, and I know there's more buildings that continue to be built. Their budget is well over $100,000, $100, $100 million. And then I put the website if anybody wants to look at the budget document. Back in, the next one's- Back in, the next one's at the school tomorrow. Back in two thousand seventeen. The Rhode Island Department of Education hired this company Jacobs Engineering. To do condition assessments to all the public school districts, all the buildings in it. In the case of North Smithfield, Jacobs just looked at the NSES, the high school and, and the middle school. They looked at everything in all the buildings essentially. And I'll get back to this later. A little bit more detail, but part of the problem that the town has is. There was never ever a breakdown for like the middle school in the asset register that the town does every year, the audited register. They're just carrying the bond amount. There's no like sub-breakdown of windows, HVAC. So this company went in and broke down all those buildings, went through plans. And summarize costs, replacement value. And then ultimately, the school department. Used those results when they submitted the master plan, which is how they're able to do some of the. Sustain maintenance they're doing now. The gym floor. And that type of stuff. That's the basis for them getting the funding from Riot. I was here a few years ago. When the presentation was made on the asset management plan that was done for the sewer commission. They had Wright Pierce, which is a consulting engineering firm. Look at the nine pump stations, the two metering stations. They did that same thing, they, they looked at the condition of the equipment, the condition of the buildings. They looked at which areas had to be addressed first. And. Helped the sewer department come up with better ways of maintaining the equipment. And they had like a five-year capital expenditure to get everything up to snuff because it had pretty much been. Not maintained, well maintained over the years, and it was old. It's tough to maintain old equipment. All right. The other example was way back in two thousand fourteen when Joe Casale Engineering did the roadway improvement. Report where they looked at all the roads in town, they did the same thing, they did a, first they did the inventory. They did the condition report and they ultimately came up with a plan on when things needed to be either repaired or replaced. And that ultimately led to a bond issue being passed and I think you're still following that plan. Eleven years later. So that's a success story and that's the type of thing asset management can do. So with that as background. When we first started out. We had a bunch of documents that we got besieged with. There was the audited fixed asset listing, which is, I don't know if you've ever seen that, it's got to be like twenty pages of Excel. Assets, easements, some of the things going back to like the thirties. But there's still assets that the town owns. Theoretically, after a certain period of time, the value was zero, but they still carry that as assets that the town owns. We had a list of town insured equipment and buildings as part of the inter-local trust. We relied heavily on vehicle and equipment logs that DPW and the police department do. They do a really nice job of keeping care of their equipment and staying on top of the maintenance. And we looked at the capital improvement program. So the early decisions we made is, we were only going to look at items that cost five thousand dollars or more. Had a useful life greater than three years. And these almost follow the parameters of the CIP. We decided to concentrate on vehicles and equipment because that was the most reliable list we had. And because the, the road program was ongoing and the school department had some form of asset management. And the water and sewer department was embarking on that, we kind of put that on the back burner. The initial findings. When we started to compare the lists, it was just sure to be in a horror show. None of the lists agreed. Vehicle, vehicle identification numbers, plate numbers, model numbers. They were, it was tough to get two out of the three lists to agree. And we eventually just went with the, the police department and public works records because. They inspect their vehicle, public works checks their vehicles every month, checks the mileage. And we know that the model numbers and the license plate and everything line up correctly. But. Let there be no mistake that the asset register that is done for the town doesn't overly help an asset management program. What you're trying to do with asset management is kind of maintain things from cradle to grave. Keep, keep the buildings, keep the equipment, everything running, but at some point in time. It's time to replace it. So it's maintaining it and then coming up with a strategy of when you need to replace it. And again, the asset register, that's just trying to depreciate. Asset management, you're trying to project what the replacement value was something that was bought five years ago. Which is challenging, but can be done to a certain extent. The other problem that we had. As I mentioned before, when the town goes out for a bond project, they only. List that total value of the bond, and I think it's like a twenty year, twenty year before the depreciation hits. But within a building, you, the building might last fifty years. The HVAC, HVAC equipment might only last ten, generators might ask twenty-five. You really need to break down. Not just the building, but all the assets within the building. And we're not doing that. It's getting better since we first started out as a group. Cynthia recognized what the problem was and we had a lot of help. Recently. So our recommendations is, you know, asset management requires somebody to oversee the program. It's a unique skill set. And you really need to have somebody almost from the get-go be available to. Do like what I did with the Bay Commission, oversee the implementation of the program. And we were thinking that a way to do that is to. Go out with an RSP and see if we can find like a sort of, like an OPM model where we can get somebody to act on the town's behalf. Work with, work with the asset management commission to try to develop, develop a program. Ultimately, what that process would lead to is. Coming up with a subsequent. RFP where you would hire a firm that would help the town set up an asset management program. And that would be the condition assessments, finding all the assets, the risk analysis and all that. Some of the stumbling blocks that. I, I witnessed and lived with as we were developing the program at the Bay Commission. You can't underfund the program at the beginning of the asset management program at the Bay Commission. There were a lot of expenditures because there was, there was delays, maintenance, and it was a lot of catch-up. But I think within like three years, all those expenditures started to even out and. Where they're probably fifteen, sixteen years into it, and if you look at their records, you can see that their expenditures. To keep that equipment maintained and replaced, held pretty steady. You also need to have, set some guidelines and set up a system that everybody can follow, so in other words. When an asset is established in the town, whether it be like the purchase of a vehicle. There has to be a list of information that's, has to be, has to be generated at the beginning. Most of the equipment and vehicles have owner's manuals. And, you know, have warranty periods, it's really important during whatever the warranty period is to follow the recommendations on what needs to be done. The other problem that I faced was turnover. We took so long to develop the program that we, we had people that were filtering in and out of the program. On the other hand, they participated in the development of the program, so there was a lot of buy-in when we finally. Unveiled the, the total program. But turnover can, can, can be a problem, especially I see in North Smithfield, a small town. You have one key person move on to another job and. Kind of the boat rocks a lot. And then the most important thing is people have to recognize to have a successful asset management program, you have to spend money. Because ultimately, you're gonna save money. But again, it, it, it's an investment into, into the town's assets. We included. A couple of. I guess sites that you can see what went on Saskatchewan. Apparently had a program where that, I think it's a province, they, they set up a program. And wanted municipalities to develop asset management programs. So the real world example is a, like a fourteen minute YouTube clip, that's pretty good. It's municipal officials. The people that developed the programs talking about why it's important and what the net results are. And. They also did a slideshow, which by the way, is much better than this, okay? But it's, again, it's information that can help people understand what the goal of an asset management program is. And lastly, we took a stab, if we get to the point where we hire a firm to develop an asset management program. It might be good to break up that program into two phases, let them beat the bushes, talk to town staff. Develop the asset, the listing of the assets. Look at the organizational structure in the town. And look at. The software packages that are available that best suit the town. And make a recommendation to the town council in the town. So you can decide how deep you want to dive into asset management. And then the next stage or phase two would be actually be implementing the program. Where you'd involve staff like inputting data and going out and looking at, looking at some of the assets to learn how to. Determine the condition. And ultimately. As, as an aside, and they debated how I was going to say this. When we started out on the program at the Bay Commission, our finance department didn't want anything to do with it. And by the time the program was. Finished and started to be developed, they were incorporating that into their budget documents. And they're the ones that went to bat to the PUC to get the rate structure changed, to be able to have the money to keep the program going. In the report, you'll see that. Even though the budget document only looks at a five-year window. We, we went out fifteen years because a lot of, a lot of times, that's the life of the equipment. And you want to have a realistic picture over the long haul of what your expenditure is going to be. So. Sold on the program. Lot of, lot of staff buy-in. It was a lot of dubious people at the beginning and a lot of believers at the end. And. They're at the point now is, as people retire, there's other people that can just step up and fill the jobs. They have, I had one person that worked full-time managing the asset management program. What was the way, the way we did it at the Bay Commission, I had. Four divisions in, in. Four sections in my division, and each of those section heads are responsible for developing their own budgets. But they were also responsible for maintaining their own assets. So the person that ran the sewer department had to keep the pump stations running. And the sewer lines cleaned and all that, and the two wastewater treatment plants, each of those superintendents. Had to make sure all the equipment was running. That the maintenance, maintenance of the equipment was meeting the schedules. I, I don't know where the town would fit into that model, but that's why you hire somebody to kind of look, look at the town staff and try to make those type of decisions. Or at least guide the town and. So come up with a model. So again, if I would come away with anything, try to understand that. It doesn't have to be huge and big. And complex. And you have control about how detailed the town wants to be in tracking the assets. But it's a great program. The CIP at the Bay Commission is now only on bond projects. We have, they have a lot of regulatory demands that they have to do certain things, and that's the only thing that the CIP does. It doesn't include anything with asset management. They, they don't call it the asset management fund, they call it the capital operating program. And again, you have a year to spend that money. And. And I've seen it work, it's been sustained. I've been, I think it's six years, the end of this month and six, yeah, and it's still going strong.
So can I ask a question? So once you, you were saying, don't underfund it, so are you talking about once it's finally. The list or the assets are finally generated onto this sheet, it's, it's probably going to end up being like your five, ten, fifteen year capital plan, right?
Right, right.
So would you. Forecast that or budget that with a certain percentage of whatever the town revenue is going to be, is that how you would work?
No, I think it would be based on needs, because when you do the study, you'll know roughly how much you need every year.
But if we, like some, like you said, some years it may be really high, and then once we get established, it could lower, but.
Right.
As a base, would, is there something that you would use just as, to know what your maximum, I guess, for the year?
Well, I think, yeah, and I think the, the, what you look at is when the plan is developed, you look at that first five years. And say, okay. How much are we going to spend in five years, let's see if we can. Even it out over those five years. And ultimately, that would become your baseline, and if you don't spend the money. It stays in that account for the next year. And at some point in time, if you find out you don't have enough money, you would lift the amount and vice versa. If you find out that you're not spending on a yearly basis what you expected, you can limit, limit the amount. Did that answer it?
Yeah, I was just wondering how you were going to base what the potential amount we had to spend. Like, was it going to be based off some sort of percentage of revenue?
No.
However, you.
Yeah, you can't, it's just based on your needs, trying to maintain that equipment. And again, my experience was. We didn't overspend those first three years, but the first three years were the most expensive years. And then it kind of reached equilibrium. And the other juggling act that you, you do, so on a yearly basis, the town would have. An asset management items. That needed to be addressed that year, based on the long projections and that. And. The problem we ran into was vehicles, so if. There was a lot of times where we'd order a vehicle and it wouldn't come in within the fiscal year. So we'd have to kind of rob Peter to pay Paul, who would go to the next year. And we'd have to drop a project to be able to accommodate the vehicle that came in in July. On the flip side, what you can't control is you can. On the flip side, what you can't control is you can project when it's time to replace an asset, but if something happens to that asset before its useful life, you have to be able to have that flexibility to say, okay, we expected that vehicle, for instance, to be last for another five years, but it's just blew the transmission, it's been in an accident, whatever, and it's more to make those repairs than the asset is worth at this point. So we have flexibility to move things around, but again, it's trying to even things out over time. And there's quite a bit of examples in the report that we included that shows that.
Mr. Nordstrom, I have a few questions. For phase one, for the suggested scope of work for development of the asset management plan, is the thought that in order to kick off phase one, that we would go out to RFQ for an OPM? Or are there components?
No, the OPM, actually, we're thinking that the OPM would help develop that RFP to hire the company.
To hire the asset management?
Right, and working with working with the town and working with the Asset Management Commission to try to do it. Just because we put those phases in, it doesn't mean necessarily that that's exactly what the scope is going to look like.
Well, it looks like within at least phase one, that there are some things that are more immediate need, right? So generating an asset listing and hierarchy, conducting condition assessment on identified assets, and then understanding that, you know, if we do move forward with this program, where will this program live? And I think I did read within our packet that there was a suggestion that potentially the facilities director, I know we've talked a little bit about a facilities director and if he could support that role. But I'm just wondering if there's anything that our Asset Management Commission could do to kick off some of this work as we then collectively determine how we would like to proceed with, you know, the program technology? So like, what is the, I don't want this, you've provided us with really amazing information, and that's it's a lot of work, and I definitely see that there's a gap within the town that's obviously been identified here. But I'm just wondering if there's some work that we could get done upfront to then determine if a true if true technology, if headcount is required in order to manage us on an ongoing basis?
I I agree with you, and I think that's the point of hiring an OPM type of person.
Okay.
Rely on their expertise.
Okay.
I hope there's people out there. I know there's firms out there. And then as as a town, we would have to decide, well, if this group gets hired to be the OPM, does that automatically nullify them doing the phase one and phase two work? That stuff will cross that bridge, we'll come to it.
So is also the recommendation that in pursuing an OPM to move forward with the asset management program, that we no longer have a commission to support our asset management needs in town? Like, would this sit within, so the OPM would implement and then this asset management?
I think I understand what you're saying. Ultimately, yeah, it's something some town department has to grab and take responsibility for.
Right, has to own.
But the Asset Management Commission, if you look how the charter reads and how the it's got some broad, there's other things that the Asset Management Commission could be working on.
Okay.
While this stuff goes on. Technically, we're supposed to review any building plans, which is a tall order. I mean, when you already have a group like the Hallowell people that are bird dogging that, why would you bring in another group to look over their shoulder? I mean, we could advise, we could.
So we wouldn't decommission the commission? We would just leverage the commission in different, in their other capacities?
Right.
Okay.
Right. That's what I think anyways. That's my opinion.
Ray, do you have any thoughts on this? Do you have any thoughts on the asset management program proposal?
Please leave me that and talk about it, but I would rather wait until I think we also know the administrative.
Okay, is that the next step?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we wanted to make sure you had the opportunity to hear Paul and his commission make a presentation. There's a lot of stuff that's been put in front of you. There's no definitive ask in front of you right now. We want to circle back and really define what that what that suggested approach is. There has been $35,000 budgeted for this. We really need to figure out what is the best way to approach it and then come back to the council and discuss that with a with a recommendation.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Oh, and the only thing I forgot to do, I'm sorry, and this is an extra item on you during the, we're down to three people because Josh Wolk resigned the last council at the last council meeting. So it's, I'm very confident in the people that we have that we can get things done, but all you have to do is have one of the people not be there. We've had several meetings we've had to cancel because we didn't have an agenda. I can't take anybody with me like when we with the finance director. I can't take anybody from the commission with me because that's the majority of the people and we'd have to post and I don't, I'm not complaining, I don't mind doing that, but having five people would be a lot easier.
The one on that.
Good, good. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So we'll get going with trying to get this on the website.
All right, next item is resignation from Asset Management Commission, term ending We have the resignation from Josh Wolk, who has resigned from the Management Commission. And Joanne, we can send him a letter like we normally do. Discussion by Council vote on other action on appointments to town boards and commissions. One, Asset Management Commission, completion of a term ending 11/30/2028. And you do have an application in your packet. I'll make a motion to appoint Gina Astorini to the Asset Management Commission with the term ending 11/30/2028. That's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau Goddard?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher Faro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Alve.
Yes. Could, will the town, will you reach out to her just to let her know? Discussion by Council vote on other, I'm sorry, Hallowell Multi-Generational Building Committee, completion of a two-year alternate term ending 2026.
Madam President, I would like to nominate Bob Mayo. He was formerly on the Hallowell Committee. I know that Mr. Mayo is also very involved with the food pantry. I think we discussed our last town council meeting that the food pantry could also generate, we want to prioritize the food pantry, but it could also generate some prospective funding. Is that what I heard? So I think that his expertise and his involvement in the food pantry would also be incredibly helpful on the building committee.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And then can I, can I do an appointment? Can I do a motion for someone? All right, so I'd like to make a motion to appoint Kayla Lenoey to the Hallowell Multi-Generational Building Committee. She was also on the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, so that would be a helpful addition to that committee. So that's going to be my motion for Kayla Lenoey.
Do we have room for two of them?
No.
No?
Just one. Is there anyone that wants to second that motion?
I'll second that one.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. So now we're going to vote according to who we want, right?
Right.
Okay.
There are two nominations on the call for one position for the record. So now when the clerk calls to vote, you do, you announce the name that you're voting for.
Any further discussion or nominations? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau Goddard?
Bob Mayo.
Mr. Christopher Faro?
Bob Mayo.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Bob Mayo.
Mr. Punchak?
Bob Mayo.
Ms. Alve?
Kayla Lenoey.
So could you let her know that she's also been appointed? Discussion by Council vote on other action on St. Paul Street Waterline Extension Phase Two.
We had a long time for this.
Yeah. Good evening. William Dakota, 143 Black Plain Road, Superintendent of Water and Sewer. I'm here tonight to discuss the the preliminary plans for phase two of St. Paul Street Waterline Extension. So this is the final piece as far as we're trying, what we're really trying to do is nail down a price on this this part of the project. And this project goes back to 2021, so I expect that you might have a few questions about it. But what the way it came, it came to fruition was that in 2021, and that was prior to me, that there was, we were made aware that there were funds available through congressional direct spending. So, you know, to try and meet the deadline, they kind of threw a price together with some numbers they had off the the back of the envelope, and they came up with $1.5 million, which it was not even close to that. So, but we applied for the for the grant and it was, the the funds were earmarked. So we, at that point, we decided to break it into two phases. So we broke, the the project was estimated somewhere around $5.1 million. So we broke it into two phases. We went after funding for the second piece. And we, those funds are earmarked as well. This particular project, in in my opinion, is most likely not going to happen unless we get all the pieces in place because frankly, the water depart, it's not the water department's part of their water system, right? So it's part of Blackstone, and we don't technically have the funds to do this project. So that's why we're kind of going after grants for it. So this this contract right here is going to have Wright and Pierce go out, take the phase two and kind of give us a cost, cost estimate on that, and so we can kind of move forward with, you know, going after the remainder of the funds. So as as part of, as part of the the project, when you get these these funds from congressional direct spending, there's, there's a responsibility on our side, a 20% cost share. So going after these plans and getting them lined up, that that goes toward our portion of the cost share. So that's where we're at, right there, so.
Next question? Geographically, can you explain to us what phase one did and what, you know, where and what phase two is?
Okay, so so phase two is the target area, actually. So phase two is a section of North Smithfield that's serviced by Blackstone. And so what happened is originally, the way it was explained to me originally, maybe 80 or 90 years ago, is actually operated by Wind Socket. It got passed over to Blackstone, they separated the line, and now that was fed by Blackstone. So that area on Elizabeth Street and that area, that it's been neglected, right? So from their point of view, from the town's point of view, it's like they want to take care of their residents. We don't see it that way, but that's their point of view, right? For us, it's their their customers, and they should. But that area has been neglected for all these years. It's made up of two-inch waterline, one-inch waterlines, they've got lead pipes in the ground over there, they've got galvanized steel. It's a mess. They have no no fire suppression except down St. Paul Street, so it's a mess and it's it's completely neglected. So, you know, the the problem is, is that these lines are going to be changed. The residents there, they don't have the, they don't have adequate flows. They have continuous water bans in the summertime, so what we would like to do is bring water down to that area. And the path we, in phase one, we determined the path is actually from Menden Road up by Husker San Antuan to bring it down to St. Paul Street. So that phase one basically gets us there, doesn't actually do any of the work that needs to be done, right? And so it's Colerick Street, it's Elizabeth, and in that area, that that's where the the actual work needs to be done. So we've got phase one figured out. We've got the cost on that. This is all really about phase two. We've got some some rough numbers for phase two, so basically, the way we did that was we just took the cost per foot on phase one and we gave us a rough idea of what we had in phase two, but none of the design work is done. That's what this piece brings in. It brings in the design, and it brings in the, it'll give us a closer estimate on the cost of the complete project.
So this would cut Blackstone out of the equation entirely?
Actually, before they they, what they, what Blackstone did, like, just before I got here, right, in 2021, somewhere around that time, they actually installed a master meter on Elizabeth, right? So their thinking is, is, is they're going to sell water to North Smithfield, they're going to call that a connection and then just hand that to us. The problem with us taking that is is that they still don't have fire supply there, they still don't have adequate water, they're still going to be dealing with the water bans, they will not let us expand that system at all. The Blackstone, their their water, the water supply is struggling, right? So they they will not let us expand at all. So for this to happen, it really has to happen on our side. We have to be able, we've got plenty of water we can get from Wind Socket at the connection. So, you know, it's really the the only way we can actually bring fire supply and water to that area.
If I could sort of jump in on this too, because there's a, notwithstanding the additional engineering and cost estimation we need to do, there's a pretty big delta here between what we have in the bank and what this thing's going to cost us. As as the administrator, this is still the town of Blackstone's responsibility, bottom line. And to think that they can just walk away and make it our responsibility, I think is a fool's errand. There's going to have to be some detailed negotiations down the road with Blackstone on this issue. Clearly, we as a town need to be motivated to solve the problem for our constituents. But it's going to require Blackstone to be part of the solution as well. So I think what Bill's talking about is being able to be more definitive with the numbers, and then we can come back to the council with a strategy. Look, this is how we're going to have to approach this thing because we do have a pretty big gap on the funding.
Administrator, this is the same situation, this is identical to the situation that we're facing at Union Village, correct?
Ditto.
Okay. Because that's a time bomb waiting to happen. That's going to blow up in our face one day.
Absolutely. And and that is much bigger than this section.
Absolutely.
This is 53 houses, and Wind Socket has 611 service connections on, on, you know, that they're responsible for.
So what happens when we start supplying them with a solid, suppose this all works out great, and we start supplying them with water, but an amount of water that they've never had before, and all their little two-inch pipes, are they going to have problems now with it?
Well, that's the, that's the, this part of the project is actually going to price out the improvements needed to the distribution system. So this is all about putting eight-inch pipe through there, hydrants, service, services to the curb.
Bring it to the street, though. When I bring it to the house, are we, I'm talking about the piping.
So, yeah, absolutely, that's a really good point. So there are going to be some challenges with that, but there is money out there right now. There's a big push by by, I think, I want to say it's a 2035, it's, is it 20, yeah, 2035, 10 years, that all lead services and water and galvanized iron is going to be, it needs to be identified by now. And and frankly, it's not in that area. Needs to be identified by now, and then you have to have a plan to make those replacements. So a lot of communities, there's funding available through the SRF funding and its principal forgiveness. So there, like, loans that people can take out, when, I think Wind Socket, and I don't really know all the the details of it, but they take out the loan, they offer the loan to the homeowner, it gets replaced, and then principal forgiveness is is applied to it after the project is done. So, or or low-interest loans. I mean, it could be a a combination of both. And so that's how you make those repairs on that side, on the owner's side. Yeah.
And all this also talks, speaks to, when you talk about the the water, the fragility of the system, if you will, whether it's off Elizabeth Ave or it's in Union Village. What we as a community don't have is we do not have a facilities plant for our water system, and we need one bad. We have one pretty much for the sewer, but we do not have one for the water, and we're going to have to start thinking about how can we cobble together the money going to have to start thinking about how can we cobble together the money to do a town-wide facilities plan that identifies all these weaknesses in the system and comes up with a long-term plan on how to manage them? Because if anything keeps me up at night, it's the water system in Union Village that keeps me up at night, because that is, that's, that could explode on us, and that's going to become a major problem for our town. So, we have to get ahead of that curve now, and that's why we need to do a facilities plan.
So, now this $18,500, is this in the enterprise fund?
To cover this, yes.
Yes.
All right, anyone have any other questions? What kind of turnaround are they talking about on this?
Oh, this should be relatively quick. Phase one was a little bit more in-depth, that was figuring out paths and environmental impact studies and things of that nature, so this should be relatively quick. I would expect it in within two to three months.
Yeah, if I could just add one thing, you know, you talked about having Blackstone try to help us with, with part of this, that's not going to happen, I don't think, same thing with Winsocket. And the reason being is these, Winsocket and Blackstone, what they have in common is they don't have any money either. With Blackstone, it's not really a wealthy community, and neither was Winsocket, so it's going to be like pulling teeth to get them to kick in any, anything on this project.
It could be a challenge. They did spend quite a bit of money putting the master meter in, so, I mean, you know, I mean, which they probably shouldn't have. I mean, I'm not going to get into their business, honestly, but, yeah, I'm sure they're not just going to hand it over just like that. I mean, the, I mean, yeah, I just don't want to say something I shouldn't.
That's fine. Okay. Does anyone have any other questions? Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Wright Pierce for the preparation of preliminary plans and estimates for the St. Paul Street Water Main Extension Phase Two. And I assume, does the administrator sign this, or do you go?
Yep.
And have the administrator sign the contract in the amount of $18,500.
That's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Old business discussion by council of other action on status slash progress report of specific items, the municipal building review task force slash status and timing. We don't, there's really not much of an update since our last meeting that we had when we approved the OPM. And we are waiting for the, I know they sent a sample of the AIA contract, but we didn't actually get a completed AIA contract, right? I haven't seen one.
No, we don't. So, they sent us a recommendation to utilize AIA contract C172, 2014, which is a, it's a program management contract. Obviously, this is a project manager, however, it does, you know, pretty much check the boxes for what we need our project manager to do in this regard, so. They looked at some others, CMAA, the Construction Management Association of America, mainly construction management, they're not a construction manager, we're going to have a GC, you know, come on board at some point. And then EIAC 103, it's also more construction management-based, so. They are looking, you know, basically, but I don't think we need to do anything with this, it was more just informational. The process now will be that we will negotiate terms of this contract, it's a, the beauty of the AIA document is it gives you the boilerplate, it's a standardized document. However, we can fill in specific aspects and specific parts of that contract to, you know, tailor to meet our project needs, so. That will be the next step with Signal Works and the administration.
David, there were some optional recommendations that Signal Works outlined in this proposal, and it says essentially, if desired, the town may consider including these, I assume in the contract. I, I appreciate the exhibit of deliverables, I think that would be really helpful for the town council to have an understanding of. The project communication protocol, I think, would also be incredibly helpful, and then limits of authority, I think, would be a value add as well. Can we request to incorporate those into?
Sky's the limit right now.
Okay, perfect.
I don't think we need to make a motion on that or anything, right?
No, there's nothing, that's, yeah, that's it, that was the last thing that we received.
So, was there not a subcommittee meeting?
So, I don't want to steal your.
No, no, go ahead.
All right, so the next item is the conversation and reorganizing, so I guess I just wanted to, this whole, you know, municipal buildings review task force, town council has taken over that role, so the five of us are, you know, that municipal, do we want to continue going that way? We have, I don't know that it was ever, you know, formalized that there is a subcommittee for the municipal, municipal building review task force. You know, we've got the building committee now for the Hollowell multi-generational facility, do we want to, you know, have a building committee for this police station, since, you know, it's more of a real project now? I just think that, you know, over the next couple of months, the architect Signal Works is going to need our input, our feedback, and our approvals, and time-wise, I just don't see that we get to it, it's kind of more of a back burner thing, it needs to really move to the front burner, in my opinion, so.
Can we just move it to, make sure that we move it to the front burner of our town council meetings?
Yeah, because the only, I mean, and I totally understand what you're saying, but when we did have the, what was it then, what was the, the, was it MBRTF? When we had that, like, we just weren't getting feedback quick enough, we weren't getting answers, we were going a month or two just to get one answer, so I agree, maybe once we get the OPM and once we know exactly, like, the calendar of events or the timeline, then maybe pass it off to a committee, but I'm just afraid that we're going to go back to how it was before, that we're not going to get feedback as quick as we're going to need it, and I think it's going to slow it down even more than it would now, and I, I don't, I mean, it's been a little bit slow, but I think it's just because of the things that we've been doing, like, they, you know, they put out the RFQ, they, then we had to wait for the proposals to come back and go through that whole thing, but I think once we're past this point, it should probably stop, I mean, you would know better, but I would assume it's going to stop moving a little bit quicker once we get past this point, is that not a fair statement?
Yeah, I guess it's just, you know, making sure that we're all in agreement that we want to remain as the MBRTF, for one thing, and do we need to say, okay, the official subcommittee who's participating in, you know, conversations with the administration and Signal Works outside of a potential meeting here are these two people or this one person, just so that we can keep things moving? Obviously, no decisions are going to be made in those, you know, meetings, but at least it keeps funneling things to this town council MBRTF in order to keep things moving.
Who is on the subcommittee?
That's a great question.
Again, I just hesitate, I'm hearing that, I just hesitate creating any sort of subcommittee. A subcommittee would also have to comply with the OMA. If you're talking about liaison, you're going to say one or two members, so you've got a five-member committee, and you're going to say, one or two people will be the liaison to go meet with the administrator, meet with the OPM, or meet with Signal Ridge, that's fine, then you don't have to worry about OMA. But if you say a subcommittee, you make a subcommittee of three, you're posting on OMA.
Who said subcommittee, we're talking about liaison.
Right. So, that, so my advice, and we had this discussion on the phone, Councilman, so my advice would be, if, if that's what you want, to have two people interact, understanding that they're not going to be able to make decisions. A decision can only be made by the council anyway.
Right.
Whether in the, the MBRFT was a recommendation to the council, it was never a decision-making, a decision-making body, never was, it was just a recommendation. So, liaison's fine, just as long as you know you, you're just getting information back onto the council.
So, if that's the case, do we even need the MBRTF? If, if, if all they could do is recommend, do we just say, hey, listen, you know, we're going to have two liaisons for the town council to, you know, the police station project? Do away with the, just take the confusion out of it?
You can do that, I mean, at that point.
But not to recommend to ourselves.
Right. No.
Right.
That, that's absolutely true. I mean, again, that kind of morphed into the situation, but certainly, you could eliminate at least, just, right now, you could just ignore the, ignore the committee and have the liaisons work with the administration, work with Signal Ridge, the OPM, and report to the council instead of the, making it be MBRTF.
And then we just keep it on the agenda, that we just update, just like we have been with discussion vote of other action.
That's fine. But there was this, there was a real, my thought, at some point, there was a real reason why you were all meeting in that capacity for a while, you know?
Well, because they all resigned.
Right, that's correct.
Yeah, I mean, everyone resigned.
And we didn't want to leave it just kind of hanging. Now that we know that you're moving forward, you've got a handle on where you're going, perhaps, you know, it does make some sense to just have the council proceed with all decision-making at the council meeting, unless you're going to, it's, keep the MBRFT as a committee that you might.
Use in the future.
Use as a vehicle for the future.
Right.
Or maybe not, like I said, it's only, it can be, we can, we can revisit that, maybe we can discuss that later, but I guess the answer tonight would be appoint two liaisons, less than three of you, so that you don't have to worry about compliance with the OMA, so you can move products along, move the progress, a project along, and get it on the council docket as soon and as often as you need.
We just got to make sure Signal Works is crystal clear on, you know, those liaison attended meetings are informational, and they may have to come, you know, to a town council meeting.
Right.
Or, you know, it might just be a presentation of, you know, what has happened over the two weeks.
He seems to have a pretty good, what's his name, the guy from Signal Works?
Eric Kami.
Eric Kami seems to have a pretty good grasp of how things work.
Well, most importantly is what you're saying, Councilman, I don't want to take any more of your time, but is that you make sure that they understand, whenever they are looking for a decision point, don't ask for liaison, ask to be put on the council.
Right, yeah.
Don't, don't have a meeting with them and spend two hours, and he thinks he, or someone thinks they're getting a decision made. That's the problem, I think, that you're running into.
Yeah.
Unless the administrator has something else to say with that.
No.
No, you don't like that?
No, I do, I, I really don't, although it's slightly different, I don't think it's that much different from the Hollowell multi-generational project, clearly defining what the role is, because I think there was some confusion on professional leadership in terms of the reporting requirements, and it's not the committee, they didn't have that authority, and I don't think that was really clear very early on, it is now. So, I think it's very similar, and I, I think it makes a lot more sense what the solicitors are suggesting, it's easier.
So, do we need to make a?
Do you have action?
No, we can do action.
Okay, so if you can have an action, you could just appoint, you can, you could make that decision tonight to appoint two liaisons, and I believe you've been almost operating that way to some extent.
Pretty much, yeah. I mean, just because there's been stuff that, just with the bids and stuff, and then there was no discussion, because we brought it back here, so. All right.
So, do we need to appoint liaisons officially? I think David and Kim are actually not.
I think that's just going to make it clearer for everybody, right? That you shouldn't, so that every, because you can't, you can't be bouncing in and out and then have a, again, if you have, if you're having a conversation with three of you on separate things, separate emails, now you're back into the OMA.
Yeah, no.
It's going to have to be two people that are communicating outside of the body, and that's fine, you just can't be three.
And that go to the same point, that whoever the liaisons are, now they can't go, like, and, because now that is, so as long as the liaisons know, they can only speak to each other.
That's right.
On that one topic until we get into public. Okay, all right.
So, David and Kim, do you want to continue operating in the capacity of liaisons?
I would.
I'd be honored.
Yeah.
So, I nominate President Alves and David Punchak as liaisons for the North Smithfield Police Department ongoing project.
Okay, that's a motion, is there a second? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes. The next one is charter review committee guidance to review town charter, Mr. Christopher?
Yes, so as the liaison, town council liaison for the charter review committee, I was not on the town council when this charter review was initially proposed and approved, review committee, rather. So, I'm looking for some clarity from the town council on how you would like us to proceed with the town charter review. It is my understanding that essentially, the genesis of the charter review committee was to review the town charter, and I, and I had the opportunity to meet with Doug Ozier earlier today, actually, for a better understanding of just some background. And some of the points that were previously discussed that led us to approving a charter review committee were changing our town from a charter from a town administrator to a town manager, there was the proposal to stagger term limits for the town council, there was also a previous conversation he mentioned about budget timeline and language that's in the charter, town council resignations, and like, the logistics on how to approach that. So, those were some of the early recommendations for the charter review committee, but given we are a new town council, I'm just looking for some clarity from our current town council on how to proceed. The charter is pretty lengthy, so we really do want to focus our efforts to ensure that we're prioritizing accordingly, especially if we want to get any charter review amendments or changes on the 2026 ballot.
Have you, has the committee met?
No.
Okay. So, Mr. Administrator, just, I'm thinking it's probably a good place for them to start, is maybe meet with you and the planner, and maybe some of your key people who?
Yeah, and you know, I, and I have had conversations in that regard, the topics that you outlined, Councilwoman, I mean, they're the big, big things, but there are so many other things that, you know, the administration and its team wants to talk about that, if, that impact the operations of town hall. So, all that I would ask is that the charter review commission make a point as part of their information, you know, collection analysis, that they meet with the administration so we can sit down and identify the areas that we think should be under consideration.
Okay. Just thinking through how to approach that. So, would it make sense for us to meet collectively as the town, as the charter review committee, level set that expectation? And then, is it myself, as the town council liaison, potentially one other member of the charter review committee, find time with you, or would you like to meet with the entire committee?
I mean, I would leave that up to you and the, and the commission. I think that probably the best approach for, would be for the administration to sort of put together sort of a outline of what are the main topics, and we could send that through to you and the commission, and then you could decide how you wanted to deal with that.
Okay.
In terms of meeting with all of us, or just a select few of us, it doesn't really matter, I just want to make sure that we have an opportunity to communicate.
Yeah, okay. So, I will take that as a to-do?
No, I just wanted to weigh in, because I'm, having lived through this process at least two times in North Smithfield and several times in other towns and cities, my suggestion would be, you may want to have General Code, who rewrote our ordinances, to see what it would cost to have them to serve as your scrivener and advisor. My experience was, you may recall that the charter review commission, the last one the town had. had something like fifty, I wish that I knew the number, but like fifty-three potential changes. And everybody thinks you're gonna make these changes, and yet, but they're very mechanically, they have to be very laid out. They have to say, change, strike paragraph, you know, section one, paragraph two, from the word after to, it's a very mechanical kind of thing. And when that got before the council, you may recall, after the Charter Review Committee spent over a year, the, the council was weighing through that, and it started to get, in people's minds, too convoluted, too, too much in the weeds, and they ended up picking a handful of topics and discarding all the rest of the work. I think what you, my advice would be, have General Code involved, and I, again, the council's gonna do what they want. I think the topics, one, the charter still has inconsistencies with state law. We pointed it out the last time the charter reviewed, there's a bunch of them, that those should be corrected. Like, your reference to the OMA in there is wrong. Your reference to contract compliance is wrong. It's just wrong because it's outdated, and any times it's inconsistent with state law, state law controls. So conflict with state law, your charter language doesn't, doesn't have any merit. So that creates a, all that stuff needs to be taken care of, but then the big topics, whatever you think they are, I don't know what they are. I'm hearing you mention three that were presented by former Councilman O'Shea. The administrator's got some on his mind, the council may. So the question is, are you sending the Charter Review Commission to review the whole charter? Or are you sending them with a charge? We want you to correct all state inconsistencies. Charge one. So that's five sections, right? Address the matters of administration concern, and then whatever the council has. Because if you're just gonna go through the entire charter, which is fine, just understand you're gonna come back with 120 items. It's gonna be this very lengthy document that you're, you're gonna get up on the screen and you're gonna be saying, we're gonna put that on the ballot and ask the voters to vote 127 items? It doesn't work.
Right.
That's my experience. So I just want you to know, before you go off and spend tremendous amounts, I think you need to be very focused on what you want to accomplish.
Yeah, so it sounds like-
So I just throw that out at you, because we, I've lived through it, and I think all the council people have lived. I don't know if you all were on here.
No, that's hugely helpful. So it sounds like there are three buckets of potential work. So state law changes, town administration changes or requests, and then potentially town council requests. So I'll take the charge to meet with the Charter Review Committee, level set on those expectations, and then we'll establish our next steps in meeting with the administration, potentially meeting with you, town solicitor, to understand the changes.
I'm happy to support the committee. I did that last time. I'm just suggesting that when it comes to the word submitting-
Yeah.
What, here's what General Code does very, very well. They did it with the zoning code, and they do it in other towns. So they'll, if there are, there's thirty-nine cities and towns. Each city and town has its own charter. Half of them have section one stated a certain way, half of them have section one stated a different. They'll say to you, here are your options. They do a very good job at that. Like, do you want this? This is one option. Do you want town manager? There are, there's two different ways they write town manager throughout the state, or three different ways. They give you every option. Because they, they've done it to so many towns. They might be a tremendous good resource for you to have the kind of package to present to the public at a public hearing, and ultimately to all the council people that need to decide. And finally, most importantly, to the public when you've got to put it on a ballot.
Right, right.
Does that make some sense? So I'm happy to-
Save you a lot of time.
Do all my, don't give you all, you know, obviously, that's my, my function. I will serve in that function, but I, I'm just trying to make sure that you-
Yeah.
You get the most out of your effort.
Absolutely.
Because I just don't, I just know what's gonna happen if you don't. You're gonna be looking at the screen and you're gonna say, we're not putting 157 questions on the ballot for the public. We're not doing it.
So just one thing to add to that is, General Code's expensive.
Yeah, well, that's true.
So when, if, the faster, I don't know what the timeline for this looks like whatsoever. I've never been involved in something like this. But if the faster the committee can, can figure out how much they want to do, we'll determine if we can put it into this upcoming year's budget.
Well, when you say how much we want to do, we, we-
Like what he was saying, the, the honey-do list of what you're gonna be sending, what you would be sending to General Code for them to correct, or to make changes.
Well, we can't make any updates to the charter until the town constituents vote on it.
Maybe you have to write them.
There's, yeah, there's preliminary steps to it.
So we have to work with somebody from General Code to write these?
You don't have to. I'm suggesting that you consider it.
Okay.
I'm certainly happy to, to work with you and do it. I'm just suggesting to you that-
Okay.
General Code will give you a price, like they gave you a price for the code. They'll give you a price for a rewrite of the charter.
Okay.
Or an update of the charter, or, that's why I'm, I'm suggesting, maybe there's, the starting point is to really get a handle on the scope-
Right.
Of what you want to accomplish. The idea that you're gonna go through everything in the charter, I think, is unrealistic.
Oh.
Cities and towns don't do that.
I don't want to.
If you notice, every city and town, they'll throw up two or three questions every election-
Yeah.
And they move their way through the charter. They don't, they've learned that you can't go up there and do a complete rewrite.
Yeah, no, absolutely not.
Does that make some sense?
Yeah, no, that's, that's really a helpful direction. Tony, how do we get some pricing, like, up front?
That's what Joanne and I were just talking about. It's, and she's been through it more than I have in terms of experiencing it with, she can talk about it.
So my concern is, if you're only making one change, it seems like, okay, we're only having, we have one change, but that one change could change, like a solicitor was saying, twenty more-
Yeah.
Parts of the charter. So it's really hard for them to give us a price. Like, I had a hard time getting the zoning one until I had actual changes.
Okay.
So you really need to have something-
Okay.
Some kind of plan of maybe just the, the three categories you have now that may be able to move forward, if you have suggestions already.
If we can, sorry to interrupt, if, if we could put a number on how many changes we had, I can look at what we spent with them already.
Okay.
If we can figure out that number, and I can kind of give a gist of a number we should, we should throw in the budget to pay for this.
Right, yes.
At least somewhere.
I would suggest that the function of the Charter Review Commission should be to digest the totality of the ideas and concerns, and basically break those down to a manageable number that they are willing to really advance to the next level of the council.
Yeah, yeah.
Prioritization.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm going to mention one more time that it could be one change, but that one change has thirty different changes in the charter. So you can't really estimate by how many changes there are. So.
That's a perfect example.
The perfect example is when, when the council was considering going to a town manager. That has a ripple effect-
Right.
Throughout the whole charter. That ballot question did go up, I recall. I think it, it went up. It did, that one did make the ballot.
Yeah, did it?
I think it did.
It did once, one time, but not last time.
Not this last time?
No, no, no.
No, but one time it did make it when I was here, and it, and it was like, if you said yes, there were thirty-two changes. And if you said no, obviously, no changes. It was that kind of thing, and they said no. So the charter didn't have to go through that ripple effect. But what the clerk is saying is, that kind of change is so, so substantial, it has a ripple, because you know how many times it says, the administrator has it. And then, keep in mind, an administrator who's elected, I'm just gonna, I'm getting off on a little tangent, but I want to explain this one point. The administrator who has elected is like a mayor, in the context that they're a chief executive elected to the people, and many times they have appointment power that's separate and distinct from your power.
Right.
Where a town manager is like an OPM. You hire that person. They have no appointment power. They don't make appointments. They don't have independent power. They're just your employee. See the difference? Because that person doesn't get elected.
Right.
They, it would be a town manager gets hired by you. You give them a contract, you give her a contract, and you do these things, but you, all that appointment power that the administrator has on boards and committees would go away. That's the ripple effect of that kind of substantial change. I'm just giving you-
No, that's helpful.
Because he's elected. The manager is not elected. Does that make sense?
If we can get the exact changes that we would like, that would make it easier for General Code to say, okay, that one change has a ripple effect of thirty different places, then we can get that.
I don't foresee us having an understanding of all the changes by the budget deadline. So what I'm thinking is, next step, meet with the committee, understand what our three potential focus areas are, further synthesize that when, in speaking with the administration, potentially speaking with you, town solicitor, and then reconvening to understand if the town council would also like us to review anything specific. And then we just continue to synthesize, 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 until we get to a point where it sounds like in time for the next budget, right, next June.
And then we have elections.
And then we have elections. So we can at least say, these are our definitive changes. This is what we're going to need to go to General Code with, and then respectively, on the ballot. Okay?
And one final point?
Yes.
And you may decide to make, make proposed changes over several-
Years.
Cycles.
Okay.
So that you don't put too many questions on the, on the election. Just something to think about.
No, definitely, definitely.
So that you don't do all that hard work, and you, and you don't get people on the committee frustrated. That, the committee was a little frustrated last time, that they had done an awful lot of work, and they felt that the council ended up deciding not to put all their-
Yeah.
Proposed changes on.
That makes sense.
So there was, you know, I think that, that's the tone you need to set pretty well, that this is gonna be a multi, multi-step process.
Okay.
What was the, what was the timeframe of your, the committee isn't, isn't that long, right? Isn't it a short period?
It's, in speaking with Doug, it was my understanding that we would make our first proposals in June, as far as changes, but they, those changes obviously can't go on the ballot until 2026. With that being said, we've obviously had some big-ticket items on our agendas over the last few months, so this was kind of deprioritized. But I think, based on the timeline that I just delineated, I think that timeline makes sense.
Do we have to revisit the resolution and see what the actual, because I think it was only like a six-month period, right?
Yeah, we might have to revisit it. And, and the reason why we made it a very short period is because we didn't want the, at the point, the committee to try to bite off more than they could chew. That was the concept, right? Again, I just want to say, you, you can't rewrite the whole charter in one, one election. It doesn't work.
No.
Unless you, to strike the whole charter and pass the whole thing, but-
Oh. There's an idea.
I mean, that's, I'm just saying, that's not the way-
You got some free time?
And that would be a very, it'd be a very dangerous thing to do, right? So I agree, Madam-
I'll take your word for it.
I think, Madam President, I think we can look at the resolution, extend the time, get a better idea of what expectations that everybody has, time and priority.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So can we look back at that for the next meeting? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right. Nope, that's the next one. Discussion by council vote or other action on communication from town administrator. Number one, grants?
Uh, yes. Uh, yes. There's been some moving things here. Most of them are negative, in part, in part because of what's happening in Washington. I had previously reported to you that we had filed a grant request to FEMA under the BRIC program for the, I forgot the name of the creek, because I'm-
Cherry Brook?
Cherry Brook. That no longer is a possibility. BRIC has been closed down by the administration. Those monies are no longer available. In fact, during that whole process, we were scrambling to submit a very significant grant application under BRIC for Route 146. I was effectively told, and we didn't really consider 146 to be a BRIC project, in part because it didn't seem to really speak to the BRIC, you know, mission. And then I was told that the administration likes infrastructure, they don't care about the environment, so submit an infrastructure grant. So we were hustling in one week to put one, and then the day before we were gonna submit it, we were told, never mind. Program's over. Now, with that being said, I'm not as fatalistic as some people. I think some of these stuff may come back. But right now, it's not an option. Concurrently, we had submitted, we were proposing to submit a couple CDBG grants, one for Scotters Hall and one for the multi-generational facility. Scotters Hall is not gonna work. And the reason it's not gonna work is because North Smithfield's low moderate income threshold, the LMI, is very low. And the CDBG money has a statutory requirement to benefit primarily low to moderate income people. We don't meet the test. We started getting pushback on the multi-generational facility, too. We pushed back, and we said, okay, I know we call it a multi-generational facility, but it's really seniors. Seniors is statutorily LMI, period, and that makes it eligible. So I effectively told GNG to communicate back to the state, it's a senior center, let's just stop playing the games. So we're getting, we're, we're running into some issues there as well. If you recall, a couple months ago, North Smithfield was finally accepted into the municipal residency program for the state of Rhode Island. Good news, bad news is, the follow-up to that is a town-wide study, facilitation, community involvement, that the, that the state gets involved with. That's typically funded by BRIC. However, the infrastructure bank sent me a message and said, we are gonna go to our board and suggest that get funded out of our own budget, because we want you guys in the program, because you're the only town in Rhode, in Rhode Island that's not part of this program. So I think we're still gonna be included, and we're still gonna be able to run that program this summer. The upside of that is, that makes us eligible for other Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank funding that we currently are not eligible for, since we are not part of the municipal residency program. So there's a lot of things moving around right now in Washington. It is what it is. I still think, I'm an eternal optimist. I think the dust is gonna settle on this in a, in a while, and there's gonna be some more sanity as to what's happening, because a lot of the programs that are being cut are programs that hit fundamentally to the Republican base in other states. So I think it's gonna work itself out. It's just gonna have to basically be rebranded in some cases, away from the hot items that the administration doesn't agree with. So that's where we're at. As you do know, we went through the RFP process for grant writing services. We've completed the evaluation of those, and I've sent out an email to the members of that evaluation committee and gave them a list of the firms from top to bottom rankings, and said, we can make our decision to maybe interview the top two or select the top. It's their committee's decision. So there's no action on the council tonight, but I think fairly soon we'll come back to the council with a request to select a firm and get them under contract. I also kind of want to play this a little close to the vest, too, because I'm waiting to see some settling of the dust in terms of what's available out there. I mean, we could be paying a lot of money every month for stuff that doesn't even exist. So I want to kind of monitor that as we go. But one final thing is, we have, we are finalizing the uploading of information as it relates to the two congressional appropriations that were approved for the multi-generational project, the four and $1 million. I believe, I'll check with Bobby tomorrow, but I think we, we had put all that together, and that's been uploaded to HUD, which is the, the entity through which our appropriations have been channeled. So hopefully, we're done with that.
Okay, one says submitted for the $4 million.
Yeah.
Right, and then the other one just says, application.
Uh, for the multi-generational?
Yeah.
Yes. That's, that hasn't been updated, because that's stuff that's come through this week, so I will update and send it back out to everybody.
Okay, so all the, so those two have been submitted?
Yes.
Okay. It's been my understanding- It's been my understanding that in order for us, yes, the funding has been appropriated, but in order for us to actually receive the funding, that we need to be able to denote our budget for, like, for the entire multigenerational center. Have we been?
Yeah, we've already done that.
Okay.
Yeah, we have the budget. That's what we've been uploading. So we have all the budget in place, all the data that we provided to them. This is the next step to basically say, okay, now you can start pulling down funds. So that's what we're working on.
So our prospective funding is, we have the $4 million grant, the $1 million for grounds, the 1.5, which is the Senator Reed 2026 request, and then the $750,000, the CDBG.
That is correct.
So does our budget align with, like, is it a one-to-one match for those grants? Or is it, let's say, $4 million, because that's what's already been appropriated?
We're leveraging, in terms of the match, we're leveraging what's already been spent by the community. So demolition, we spent over $1 million on this project. And that's what we're using as the match. We are not including additional match requirements as part of this. So if we were able to get the additional two-plus million dollars, then we are approaching $7 million on funding available. And that gets us close to what hopefully will be the finish line. We don't know what the finish line will be until this thing goes out to bid. But we're getting there, if we are successful in getting the additional monies that we're asking for.
Do we run the risk of not being given that funding if we haven't proven that we have, like, the funding to fill the gap?
What we do is, we always leave the door open in saying that the town will step in to fill whatever hole remains.
Okay.
By additional appropriation. We have to say that.
Yeah.
So yeah, we always say, one of the questions they always ask us is, if you don't receive all the funding, effectively, can you still do the project by scaling it back? And our answer to that's been, no. Because what we have as the key is the four-plus million dollars. We're not including in this anything else that was shown in the future on that site. But we're arguing that we have the money in place.
Okay.
Now, we'll see how much money we raise, and if we have a gap at the end, that's something that's come back for the council. Now, remember, as part of the, working with the committee and the architect, we have in that process a trip point. Saying, okay, how much money do we really have, and do we need to dial the project back to stay within budget? And we are still heavily focused on that issue and getting that decided on before we go too far on the full project.
Okay. Thank you.
We've had some positive feedback, though. Actually, this is not an agenda item on the multigenerational side. Shouldn't talk about anything else. We're just talking about funding.
Okay, thank you.
Pretty good.
Anyone have any other questions on grants? Route 146 TIF feasibility review update?
Yeah. As you know, we had the information session, and the consultants met with some stakeholders, which included some property owners and some developers, brokers and such. We had a Zoom meeting with the consultants last week, and they said that the feedback was very positive and that they are hoping to complete the feasibility phase of this by mid-May. So we should be getting close to at least completing that phase. Want to emphasize, as I've said from the beginning, I have no expectations that the TIF funds would cover 100% of the cost of this project. It's not going to happen. The question is, is it going to be a component? How can we fill the rest? Because I think we're probably looking at a total infrastructure cost of somewhere around $33 million to do this project. So we still got a lot to do, but the feasibility side should be done in mid-May. And we're working with PAR Engineering as it relates to the preliminary design for the infrastructure. I think, I don't want to overreact to this, but I think we got a lot of external support for this initiative, because I think in the end, it impacts not just us, it impacts other communities in a positive way as it relates to infrastructure. We're getting a lot of really positive support from Representative Casey, who's just worked really hard for us, and he's not even our rep. So I really appreciate what he's done for us. The congressional delegation is very aware of what we're trying to do and are really advocating strongly on our efforts as it relates to the 146 project. So I think we've got a lot of people in our corner right now. We just have to figure out, how do we make this project work? Because it is an expensive project.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
Now, we're okay with timing as far as, it's still time to get this infrastructure in? That's not an initial?
Oh, no, we're not going to get this infrastructure in as it relates to the completion of this road. That's not happening. That ship sailed a long time ago. We did have a meeting with the Director of DOT and his staff in Town Hall here, and they made it very clear that they will accommodate us and work closely with us as we try to extend infrastructure in that corridor. They have two parallel service roads that we can access as corridors for the infrastructure, and he's made it very clear, we will make that happen for you, we will help you. So, but in terms of us incorporating the design installation as part of the current construction, that is not going to happen. They told us, they told the town very clearly late fall last year that that's dead water.
Okay.
In the event that the feasibility review comes back and says, you know, our best possible option here is water and sewer lines. Have we engaged Wind Socket and/or Lincoln regarding whether or not they even buy into that?
We're not going to get water from Lincoln.
No, yet, I know there are.
But Lincoln has some system pressure problems, and they would love to see more of a regional approach to the water infrastructure in that area. We have not spoken to Wind Socket, other than the fact that Wind Socket agreed to participate during, with PAR Engineering, on the engineering. We're going to have to circle back on that when it's appropriate. It's not appropriate yet, because we're still in the feasibility stage.
Right.
With that being said, we also are requesting funding support to do a sourcing of our own water.
Right, okay.
So we'll play both sides and see which one is the, makes the best sense for us as a community.
So in the event that, let's say, Wind Socket does not want to provide water, we could, we would have options for other water sources?
If we're able to identify a water source, there's always been a lot of conversation that there is a fairly heavy or robust aquifer area in that corridor. And that, quite frankly, and I talked to PAR and Bill about this, the fact of the matter is, you know, we're using cost estimates for water lines, pump stations, sewer lines, and holding, and water tanks. That doesn't really change whether we're doing our own sourced water or not. And I think Bill would argue, if we were able to find our own water source, it's actually more economical to provide water, because it's groundwater, and it's easier to pump and to distribute versus from a water treatment plant. And I'm not saying I think we should do that as opposed to Wind Socket. I'm just simply saying is that we have an obligation to look at both sides so that we're not left with no options. So I think we'll be in a better position, I would say, sometime in midsummer to have a plan of action, which, and if that's still, to go forward, to have conversations, more detailed conversations with the city.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have any other questions? Thank you. Discussion by council vote on other action on abatements. Tony, you said you're handling this one?
My try. So there's only two on the list here. One of them, the administrator knows a little bit more about. The other one is part of the Dudley case, which has been discussed with the council in the prior meetings. But as far as the property itself, I'm not as familiar with it as Jen would be. She had, she was sick, so she wasn't able to make the meeting.
So I just, I just have one question, and maybe, I'm not sure if you can answer it, and you might have to come back to it, but
Sure.
the third one down and all the way, so the 1-18 down to 22. Right? So now it's tax bill 19, 20, 21, 22, and 23. Is it really different addresses, or should it all be the same address?
Different parcels. So it could still be the...
Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And they're on different sides of the street.
I'm not sure if it was just copied down and it added one to everyone?
I can try and see if, I might be able to find it in the, I see what you're saying. I didn't look at that middle column.
I agree, it just, the whole thing doesn't make sense.
If I can chime in on this one, it really is the same property.
Yeah, I think it was just dragged.
Yeah, that happens to be a property that is partially in North Smithfield and partially in Wind Socket.
Okay.
But they were being taxed if it was all in North Smithfield. And it's been going on for a long time, and we sat down and negotiated a deal with them, which is not the best for them, but it's the only one we could do under the statutes, but it's the same property.
So it was just she dragged?
I think so.
And it added one to?
I think so, yeah.
So can we have this come back next meeting?
I'm looking at it, I'm looking at it in, whatever you, the council prefers, we can do that. But I'm looking at it in the, in the tax software, just to confirm that each one of these parcels, it belongs to the 278. But whatever you prefer, if you don't want to wait on it, we can do.
I think it makes best to come back.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So we'll table this till next meeting? Okay, thank you.
The first item, if you have any questions on that, I mean, otherwise, I'd ask you to vote on that.
Okay.
First item, basically, I can explain that, because I, as a result of the Dudley litigation, we determined that instead of owning 278 acres, or 228 acres, they own 44 acres less. So they were being assessed on 44 acres that they didn't own. This was the result of a GIS mapping, and the litigation led to analysis of what do we have versus what are you assessing us? So that's a correction that needed to be made.
So what is the big difference between 21 and 22?
I don't know, I just had to take it away from me. Sorry. It's the year. I think one, one year was the revow year.
Okay.
So it went up, 21 was a revow year. That's what started litigation, was the revow year. And then next year wasn't obviously nearly as much of a credit.
Okay.
The big jump was the revow year.
All right, so we can approve or take a vote on those two, and then the remainder, remaining for that 278, we'll come back to the next meeting?
Right, the other ones don't have anything to do with the Dudley case, so I don't know anything about them. I just happen to know that, so I'm asking you to vote on it, because
All right.
there's no reason not to.
Anyone like to make a motion regarding parcel 004-034 on the abatement list? You can just do them separately.
Go far then.
I will make a motion to approve.
One second.
Oh, you want to do the math? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Karen. I will make a motion to approve the abatement for parcel 004-034 in the amount of $2,450.76.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Real quote?
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher Farah?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes. And then just put a note in the record that we'll discuss the rest of this at the next meeting. Discussion by council vote on other action on developing code of conduct regarding individuals serving on town-appointed boards and committee/ commissions, commission members. Mr. Christopher Farah?
Thank you. So I want to kick this off by saying that I, as well as I'm sure everybody on the town council, appreciates everything that our members of our boards and committees and commissions do. They volunteer their time, they volunteer their experience, their passion to enhance our town, to progress, to progress projects, as well as to continue to cultivate community involvement. We saw an amazing presentation tonight based on your experience and your time and your passion for our asset management commission and the opportunity there. So I think we can all agree that our volunteers are incredibly important. And I will say that over the last few months, I've seen just postings made by board members or committee members that, in my opinion, really kind of undermine the passion, experience, and essentially volunteerism of our board members, our committee members, as well as even our elected officials. So I think as elected or appointed officials, social media really should not be used to denigrate the town. It shouldn't be used to denigrate officials, its programs, or its residents. I think that continues to cultivate a community of divisiveness, and I think we need to really get away from that. So I think the expectations are that we act in a professional manner, and we really represent the town in a respectable way. This, you know, obviously leads to collaboration. It allows people to feel as though we live in a safe community, where people want to be involved, because they feel that their experiences, opinions, and differences are appreciated and respected. So currently, this is an expectation that's implied. So I really do feel that a formal code of conduct would really allow for us to codify this and understand, you know, the expectations of boards and committee members. So if you all feel that this is an appropriate perspective and next step, I would request that, to work with you town solicitor to understand if there are any existing codes of conduct that could be appropriate for our town to consider. Then craft a code for our town and review with the town council for approval. Do we have any thoughts, though?
I do.
Okay.
I think the time, if somebody's doing, when we, when somebody comes before the council, or if their name is brought before the council for appointment to a board, you can vote yes or no on that person, just because you don't like the color of their hair. That's fine. You can vote yes or no on them, because you don't like the things they say on social media. That's all fair game. But once they're appointed to a board, we're going to start telling people what they can say on social media, and we're going to start trampling on people's First Amendment rights. And when you, one thing that you did bring up, too, is you said, in your opinion, well, what if your opinion, I disagree with your opinion on that? What if I don't think that what somebody said was offensive, but you think something? And I don't mean just you, but if somebody else says, I think so-and-so said something offensive, and I was like, I don't think that's offensive. So where are we going to draw the line here? The line is drawn at the time of the nomination. Once we put them on, then we own them until they, until they come, until it's time for reappointment. Now, if you want to come up with an objective code of conduct, like saying, you missed four meetings, you're out. You missed in a row, you missed six meetings throughout the year, you're out. That's completely objective, and you can point to those things and you can say, this is, there's a policy, and you violated the policy. But to say that you don't like something somebody said on social media, you're going down a very slippery slope there. And what are we going to do, throw them off a board? We're going to punish them, we're going to suspend them, like? How, it's just too messy. It's very messy.
I don't think that we should allow for derogatory and defamatory statements on behalf of boards and committee members, speaking about elected officials, speaking about board members, commission members, or the administration.
I agree.
If you are an elected or appointed official, then is the expectation that you are professional, that you respect people that have been elected to these seats or have been appointed to these seats? I'm sorry, John, I don't appreciate being called a whiny bitch, okay?
I didn't call you that.
So, and that's a direct quote, but what I'm saying is, that's the expectation.
Can we, this isn't personal, we're trying to do a code of conduct, because you, everyone who is elected, and I'm going to say, let's include town council on this, too, because
Absolutely, absolutely.
you're elected to do a job, and you should portray yourself as a professional individual. And no matter what somebody says, and I don't mean this to go against you, but no matter what someone says, you still should maintain that personal, the professional
Absolutely.
position that you're in. Because there are people that are going to try and get you to go to the level that they're at. But you know what, let's, let's hope that we can... But you know what, let's, let's hope that we can have people rise above whatever it is they want to do or say or whatever.
Well, I agree, but in the time, I agree with you a hundred percent in that sense. But when the time comes for the reapportment, that's when you say, no, I'm not reappointing you because you said X, Y, Z. But, and then you, if you have three votes that, that agree with you, then they don't get reappointed. It's that simple.
Yeah, but the whole town shouldn't have to be subject to what people.
But who's to say that, that what's offensive to you is offensive to me or offensive to Claire, or offensive to anybody, you know what I mean?
Any derogatory, discriminatory, defamatory statements should not be allowed. If we worked in a corporate environment, you would, there would be repercussions.
That's the private sector.
We're colleagues, we're, we're.
They can do whatever they want in the private sector.
John, we're all working together, we're colleagues, and that requires, the expectation is that we may not have, we may have differing opinions, we may have differing experience and perspective, but at the end of the day, we can all act in respectful manner. And the code of conduct, in my mind, would establish that that is the expectation. And if that code of conduct is, you know, breached because you use defamatory, derogatory, discriminatory language, then you can no longer hold a respectable position on a board, a committee, or as an elected official.
So if there's three people on the council that disagree with what that person said, you can just get rid of them?
It has to align with the definition of the code of conduct.
But it's going to take three people that are going to determine that that person was in violation of that code of conduct. All you need is three people and then that person's gone. That's simple, right?
Potentially, John, but here's the thing, the code of conduct establishes, establishes what the expectation is. If you know that the expectation is that you need to propose, to act out of respect, be a professional, that you cannot use discriminatory, derogatory, defamatory language about another elected official, another appointed member of a board or committee, then maybe you might be dissuaded from speaking about people in that way. So if the expectation is that you don't, don't use that sort of language, and it's not just specific, the code of conduct is not just specific to that example, right? It's, it's, are we being fair? Are we ensuring equity? Are we ensuring professionalism? Are we ensuring that we're not using defamatory, derogatory, discriminatory language? If you know that that's your expectation of the code, then you might be dissuaded from doing the opposite.
But who's going to determine what's defamatory, derogatory, discriminatory language? Who's going to determine, who's going to make that determination?
And that's why I would like to understand if other towns have codes of conduct, how they uphold them, how they enforce them, and if this, these potential codes of conduct might work for our town. Other towns have it. It's not just.
I don't think, I don't think simply because you get appointed to a committee that you give up your First Amendment rights.
Well, I mean, we're doing it today at the federal level, so.
Mr. Solicitor, can I just ask a question? So now, if someone is posting something on their own personal Facebook, even though they are on a board or commission who don't receive a stipend from town, versus someone who does receive a stipend from town, is, is this something that we can get into or are we just going down the wrong slope?
Well, this is, I, I saw this on the agenda and I wasn't sure what you, I was trying to think about code of conduct. So I would like to defer my response until I get you some information. The big problem, the big elephant in the room is the First Amendment, so just so we're clear. You have all the rights as a council to develop, the word code of conduct is one thing. The code of conduct that controls or constrains someone's First Amendment rights becomes very, very difficult to do. And I don't know if, how successful you could do that. And I have to research that. I, I don't have the answer on that.
I'd like to add something straight. I'm being very straightforward, that's who I am. From day one, when I was elected, I was the hitler for someone in this town. As a person, I don't work on Facebook. Don't even want to try. But when you're being with us and they see you attacked, it shows, consider what kind of person who has to get his jollies by demeaning other people. I didn't face it. I won't face it because I know who I am. I've never looked at Facebook.
You, you, if I could just, China, there's another side to this too. Aside from what could be very subjective types of issues, there is, I think, a more fundamental issue. And that is that if you are sitting on a board or commission or an elected official, I'm not sure that you should be making comments on social media about an issue that's before these boards or commissions at this time. I think that is, that's dangerous. It undermines the transparency and the objectivity of our boards and commissions. So I think at the minimum, you need to have the, the, the wherewithal to say, no, I can say something about, and not to say you can't be on social media and say something about something else, but if I'm sitting on, I'll just use the example, I'm sitting on a zoning board and I'm making a public comment on social media about an issue that's before the zoning board right now, I think that puts the town in a precarious position legally.
Yes, it's a liability.
Yeah. Now, I'm saying that as a non-lawyer.
So I hear three different things, but I want to be clear. You've got to, if you're talking about applying a code of conduct to the council as elected officials, that's a different animal. So keep that in mind. You have a right to create rules among yourselves, but you, the rule, the penalty could never be unless you make an amendment to the charter that somehow you could remove a council person. So who can remove you or the people out there?
Right.
Thirteen thousand people in North Smithfield, you can't remove each other. I mean, unless you change the charter, most people give you that authority. Like some towns haven't, like Wind Socket has now, right? They actually had the power to remove the mayor. Council by charter has the power to do it. So put the council aside, boards and commissions, now we're talking about the administrative getting into law, something to matter that really go to the heart of what a board and commission is doing. And that is to be, to be fair and unbiased in the decision-making process. And if they're, they're saying things where they're already predetermining and prejudging a project, see? I'm not talking about being defamatory, I'm not talking about being discriminatory, I'm talking about prejudging a project.
Right.
And saying, you know, that's, that's a problem. And the third piece is, the board itself and the council itself, you always have a right to maintain the decorum in your proceeding.
Right.
So that, you know, inside this meeting, you should be maintaining decorum. The boards and commissions should be doing the same inside their meeting. No board or commission should be speaking about something that's pending before the main step when they're at the meeting, right? The council can because that's different, but I mean, boards and commissions shouldn't be doing that. Because they're a much more regulatory, quasi judicial body that's supposed to be exercising a standard of approval. Does that make sense? It's supposed to be taking evidence. You have a little bit more pro-occur. But, so you're kind of, you're kind of going three different lanes here.
Yeah.
So I'm happy to do research on this, but if it's about controlling what people say on social media, I need to, I need to research that because we're, we're bumping up against the First Amendment of the Constitution in a significant way.
I don't, I appreciate that, town solicitor, and I don't necessarily think it's about controlling what people say. I, I would like to see codes of conduct that other municipalities have. And understand if those codes of conduct could further inform the codes of conduct or code of conduct for our town in order to maintain professionalism, ethical conduct, fairness and equity. My fear is that without a code of conduct, and lack of professionalism, fairness, equity, professionalism, all the things, especially in, in age of social media where people use these platforms to potentially demonstrate that they're not those things, right? As a board or a, a committee member, that we're dissuading or discouraging people that have differing perspective, diverse, diversity, differing experiences, that we're dissuading them from volunteering their time and being able to use their First Amendment, right? By joining a board or committee and adding value because they see that other people on boards or committees may have differing opinions than them. So I think if we can establish a code of conduct that focuses on respect and again professionalism, all of those things. And I've seen really great ones, I've done some research. I would just like the opportunity to review and to share them with the town council and determine if it's something that we feel could add value in our town and further cultivate the sense of community that we all said that we wanted to run on and ensure we're continuing to promote within our town. Because right now, given what I see on social media, what I see on N R I Now or Valley Breeze posts, that, we're pretty far from a, from a community. We're very, very divisive, we're very disrespectful, and I, I don't know how we're going to continue to make any, to influence any change here or progress if we don't have a community that supports each other.
You know, you are right when you talk about those, those websites, and I've said this before, we have an element in town of really rotten, awful people that love to go after people on social media. Nobody's been a bigger victim on this than I have. You've just got to suck it up, you know? I, I don't like it, I, I think it's unprofessional that somebody would say that about you. And I don't think, but, but, so when the time comes, don't reappoint them.
But John, we have to, we, we could say, and, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to belabor this, but we could say that we're just going to suck it up and not reappoint them. But the fact of the matter is that we have to be the change, right? Because this is just going to continue and continue and continue, and we have to be the change. So if we can be the change by adopting a code of conduct, then I'm a proponent of it. Because we can't just fall prey to, you know, allowing for this sort of behavior.
My concern is though, who's the, who's the judge? Who's the jury? Who determines what's offensive? Who determines what's not offensive?
I mean, I think we know what's offensive and what's not offensive.
What's offensive to you is what might not be offensive to somebody else.
Well, if somebody.
If we can get, kind of see what, what's out there and.
I'm more than happy to go with that, I just want to make sure the board keeps in mind that there is going to be some limits on what we can do, that's all.
Absolutely, yeah.
I will, I will also reach out to the Rhode Island League tomorrow and, and, and find out if they know of anything as well that's happened on, on the local level as it relates to codes of conduct.
Thank you.
Okay?
I see this as being a possible used and abused, if you got, I'm not saying it would be by this council, but a future council with three people could go after whoever they want to go after on social, on, on board the committees and remove them, as long as they have three votes. I think this is a very slippery slope we're going down right now.
I will say one final thing on this. What, I mean, there, there are people who, whose life gravitates around being able to throw insults online.
That's right.
It's just the way it is, you know? I can, I can say though, it does come down to a leadership issue. And in the very short period of time I've been here, I know that people have been speaking very positively to me about the town council. Because they see a high level of decorum, and I think that speaks to the, I think the onus. And the onus is on all of us to take the high road in everything that we say and do. And that tends to filter through a community. And sometimes when we start responding to those that just get their jollies out of being mean, we empower them and it only makes it worse. I'm not in any way saying what you're saying, Rebecca, it doesn't have merit. I would love to know what other cities and towns are doing. I'm just saying that there's only so much we can control out there, other than what we control, how we behave every day when we get up in the morning.
Absolutely. And we have to be the change that we want to see.
Absolutely.
Yes, I don't know if there's a decision there, but I think our.
Well, I think, yeah, they're going to research it and come back.
Thank you. I really appreciate the partnership.
Discussion by council vote on other action on town council rules. I think we have to table this one because our rules weren't, weren't in the packet, so there's really nothing for us to discuss, so. So if we can put that on the next agenda, if it's not too long, please. And that brings us to the end. Accept a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.